Good afternoon. It is now 2:00 PM, Tuesday, May 14, 2019. And I call to order the special city council meeting of the city council of the city of Victorville. And the city council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Potemmer Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
We will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Police Chief Rick Besinger, so please We will start with the public comments. And I do have one card. Oscar Tejeda.
Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here to say thank you for finally getting rid of that yellow building on the corner of 7 and C, which has been a eyesore for I don't know how long. At least when I was here, there used to be a doctor doing business there, but now, ever since then, it just was crumbling. But anyway, I just want to say thank you for taking the time and actually helping us clean the area. That's really what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only card that I have. We will start our agenda items, and we have one agenda item this afternoon, and that's pre-budget workshop, establishing the annual budget for fiscal year 2019-2020. The recommendation is for -- it's at the discretion of the city council. Any decision will be at the discretion of the city council. So at this time, I turn this over to our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, and certainly appreciate you making the time on this special meeting occasion, earlier in the day, meeting at an earlier time than normal, to give attention to our upcoming budget. As you all know, annually, by July 1st, we're to have adopted a budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And the budget, as we prepare them, are intended to be plans. Plans that certainly can change, but certainly plans to get us through the year, a spending plan and a revenue plan for the year. So this meeting here is the first of potentially more. We've tried to set the presentation up for you to be as high-level as possible, but also giving you important enough information about what the final budget can look like in June. First meeting in June is when we envision bringing the final version of the agenda back, so it would be envisioned by staff that if today isn't satisfactory in terms of what's been presented, to the extent the council has additional questions, interests, desires, certainly we can have those discussions in further meetings. But really, this is to kickstart the budget conversation for the upcoming fiscal year. The format is fairly similar to the format that we did last year. And that being said, the presentation before you will be led by your executive team, myself and the deputy city managers. We also have members of staff and leadership here as well to answer any specific questions. And to the extent there's a need to go into a much deeper dive, a greater detail of the department budgets, we can try to accomplish that today if we've got the time over the two hours allotted, or that could be something also that we address in additional budget workshops. I've got an outlined agenda here for you to kind of shape the conversation, and these will be the items that we cover going forward. Of course, the 1920 fiscal year is the year that we're talking about. We have a couple of new council members since we last made the budget presentation to you. And certainly with the executive and executive team and legal counsel, that makes up effectively the group before you that's leading this effort. I do have to thank, because we are not able to put this very voluminous budget document together without certainly the guidance from our leadership team. But there's one particular staff member, if she's here. She was really kind of the backbone, from my perspective, Kim Scott. If she's here, I'd like her to stand up. Certainly was in all the meetings that I was in and was able to answer every hard question I could present to her. So she was the backbone of the budget, and I wanted to say a particular thank you to you for all that you put into. I know it wasn't easy.
Thank you. Thank you also.
This is your organization. It's a little bit fuzzy, but it's a pretty large organization, divided up. And we'll go into the staffing plan a little bit in greater detail in some further slides. But you'll see the number of direct reports to myself as the city manager, and you also see how we divide up the organization amongst the deputy city managers and the various functions. In the simplest summary of what this budget entails, you're looking at a binder that contains a budget plan for revenues in the order of $214 million, $214.9 million, and that is intended to offset the expenditures of $216.8 million. You'll see the comparisons over last year, and you'll actually note that in the financial overview for the 1819 fiscal year, you'll see what's adopted, and that would have been the numbers that we adopted this time last year. But then you also see the amended budget. And those numbers change, and the reason for the change is, over the course of the year, you approve additional capital, but also not known to us in exact number at this point and will be once we cross into the fiscal year, is any carryover from the prior year budget into, in this case, the 1819 budget, actually gets rolled into that amended budget. So that's how the budget was adopted in 1819, and that's how it evolved over the year to become our spending plan. Focusing again back on the 1920 fiscal year, you'll see $19.2 million for capital improvements, and that $19.2 is actually in the $216.8. Those capital improvements we'll discuss later in the presentation, and we can have the respective department heads speak into those items if you have greater question. But I think the final point that I like to make, and it's a point that I made last year at the budget presentation, and it's a mindset that I really encourage us all to buy into, and that's at the very bottom where we have total funds managed. You know, there's always a perception that as government, in this case, local government, if they see a number like $215 million of revenue, that that's a very big number and available for any possible purpose. And it's quite different in local government, particularly when we manage 81 funds. We manage 81 funds as if there's 81 different units, or if you're a businessperson, thinking of it as 81 small businesses. Some funds classify as general funds, some funds classify as special revenue funds, some classify as enterprise funds. And in many of those cases, whether it's special or enterprise, you've got some very strict applications to the use of those monies. So notwithstanding the totality of the budget that you see here, the 214 versus the 216, it's a very lean budget, and very much presented in such a way by staff that it's addressing what we see as necessary to run your city over the next year. In this fiscal budget...
I'm sorry, I have a question for you.
Yes.
If I may. Do you have this printed for us, or is it just on this slide?
I don't know exactly what's in the budget. Did we put the presentation printed in the budget? We did not. We can certainly print that out for you if you like. Okay, we'll do that. Thank you. And sorry about that for not including that. We were scrambling just to get the binder put together. But with those numbers that we just shared with you, here's some meaningful points that I think go into it, and I've added a few since I believe there's a couple others worth mentioning. Altogether, we assumed revenues flat. Very small increase, for example, you'll see later, in sales tax. I'm sorry, sales tax, we stayed flat, and a small decrease on property tax. But collectively, revenues are staying flat. We didn't make any aggressive projections as to revenue growth. One thing that I did do probably maybe four to six weeks ago, as we started this process, I actually sent a message out to all the leadership, and I challenged all the leadership that as we go into this budget cycle, I sent them my budget message, and it was one of my goals to try to increase productivity over the next year by increasing the number of work hours, which was to mean, it was my goal, and I was clear about it with the leadership, it was my goal to end the furloughs, get back to a 40-hour work week, and make that applicable first to labor that it's not in leadership. So all classes below what we would call 58 on the salary schedule, really trying to focus on the one fundamental question, can we afford, at least for the labor, at least for the staff, to eliminate the furlough and go back to 40-hour work week? This budget is presented in such a way where it eliminates furloughs for everybody that's class 57. I'm sorry, it eliminates furloughs for everybody, and it applies a 10% increase to everybody that's 57 and below. So that's something that we accomplished in this budget. Certainly, if council desires and believes the policy should be different, certainly we would encourage your feedback in that regard. But this budget does consider across the board an elimination of furloughs, getting back to the 40-hour work.
If I may interrupt for clarification. It was 58, but now you said it's 57 class. Was it 57 or 58?
Everyone at 57 and below.
Thank you.
Would be -- would enjoy the 10% increase. 58 and above would not. At least that's how we have this budget presented currently. And one important thing to note, as staff is reminding me, is that that same does not apply to fire, because as we rolled out the fire department, we rolled out the fire department as if they were working a traditional work schedule comparable to the rest of the industry. You've got your first full year of operation. Later in the presentation, you'll actually get to see a good comparison between what our first full year of costs are going to look like in comparison to where we left off last with the fire department under contract. Being able to compare apples to apples, year versus year, you'll actually see notable savings there. We really intended to keep operations as we planned in 1819. Important to call out is that we do have adopted rate plans for a number of your enterprises, particularly the water district has a rate plan. You will be going into year four of the rate plan. We're actually starting the rate study for the next rate plan period. And as you'll recall, the rate plan originally adopted by the council a few years ago started with a zero rate increase in year one, and then subsequent four years was 6.25%. Staff is recommending continuing with that and adopting this budget in accord with your rate plan. You'll be in year two of your sewer rate plan in the upcoming fiscal year, and the current rate plan that we have, not including any potential rate increases VWA may pass on to the city. Your rate plan for sewer includes a 15% rate increase. That is included as a recommendation in this budget. Solid Waste, you're in year two of that rate plan. You recall earlier this fiscal, sorry, last year, we adopted the rate plan. So we're in year one of the solid waste rate plan. We had a pretty dramatic increase realized this year, but you'll recall in that particular rate plan, things normalize out to a much lower rate increase level. And so this budget contemplates the rate planned amount of 3.9%. Another important element, and we'll speak to it later as it comes to funds available for discretion, despite seeing that negative number in the aggregate in the preceding slide, your general fund budget will show a surplus, and it'll be about $1.8 million. $1 million of that is largely attributed to repayment by VEMUS to the general fund of monies borrowed by VEMUS over time to start up the municipal utility. It was about $17.8 million over time that the city's general fund actually loaned VEMUS to start up its operations. Now that VEMUS is in a much more healthy position, you'll recall we memorialized the loan with the city last year, where a principal reduction on that 17.8 of $11 million was actually injected into your general fund, was largely used to help fund the fire department's startup. But then also, the VEMUS operation is responsible for the next six years, I believe it is, but basically to retire that remaining $7.8 million, I'm sorry, that $6.8 million. So the plan for that financing requires $1 million, basically until the last year, the last year all round down. But effectively, the $1.008 that we'll be talking about later, a large part of it is coming from VEMUS repaying the loan. And then what you'll find towards the end is approximately $870,000 that we've identified on a slide for you. We've got a number of suggested things that you can use, but I would suggest to you that it's about $870,000 if you take staff's recommendations that you have discretion with, and there's some suggestions we have based upon feedback we've gotten from you all as to what you might want to include, in addition to what staff is essentially recommending to help run the city. One thing I -- that's not on the slide that I will call attention to is, in the way we handled the police budget at the next city council meeting, you'll actually see the sheriff's contract go before the council. And one of the things that we did, and you'll probably notice that if we were to look at the line item for sheriff in this budget versus what you'll see at the council, at the next council meeting, we added about $500,000 to the sheriff's line item in this budget, in large part to prepare ourselves for what likely will be a wage increase negotiated by SEBA, which is the union representing the sheriff's force. My understanding, and the police chief can speak in greater detail to it, but my understanding is that they are starting negotiations with labor, and it very well could be six months before they're done. But when they are done, they will pass through a rate increase, presuming there is one, and the cities, all the contract cities, will be responsible for respecting the wage rates that are subjected under the new contract. So what we've done in this budget is we've taken the Schedule A proposed to us by the sheriff, which was just including a 2% increase over last year. We've padded it by $500,000 to have some kind of cushion in there to absorb an anticipated wage increase once the police negotiations, I'm sorry, the sheriff's negotiations are complete. And then finally, we're in the final stages of identifying the exact amount, but we do know as much based upon commodity prices, having just recently been locked in for the power. The market has been working against VEMUS when it comes to commodity prices, and so we're expecting a rate increase on the VEMUS electric side, which is serving the industrial customers at Foxborough and at SCLA.
Keith, if I may interrupt you for clarification. So since we're talking about the police contract, that would be an additional 6.25 increase plus the COLA plus the FERPA?
6.25 is throwing me off.
Right. Well, last year, we amended for 6.25, so I'm assuming another budget year, we're doing the same initial thing. We're just not discussing it because it's part of the contractual agreements that the organization has with the police force and ourselves.
The sheriff contract that we have in this budget is a 2% increase over last year plus a straight $500,000 to help absorb really an unknown number that we're expecting as a wage increase from the SEBA negotiations.
Can we anticipate a percentage with the $500,000? Is it per, or is it a specific echelon of hierarchies for our police department?
For us, it'll be, to my understanding, it's across the board. Chief can probably speak more specific to ranks that would be affected, but from our perspective, it's one price related to the contract.
And that's negotiated with the county, is that correct?
That's between the county and their police union, SEBA. So going into personnel, what we've done here is we've put together a chart that kind of shows to you, or shows you what our total staffing level is. And last year, we had both contracts for sheriff and fire, and it was intending to show not only what you directly employ, but what you also have reached to employ. And this chart is intending to do the same. You'll see a shift in, obviously, the fire contract going to the city fire department. So we moved the number below the line to above the line. But effectively, you've got directly in this budget 415 full-time equivalent employees. That's down by 10 employees compared to last year, and this is in large part to the challenge that I set out to the leadership to really look at your staffing levels and really decide what we need, especially considering the fact that there's a potential to gain additional work hours from our current employees. So that yielded in a number of position eliminations, which I'll show on the next slide. But it also shows you that your total reach, including the sheriff's contract, which you'll see at the next meeting, almost 550 employees. So your organizational reach is pretty, you're a big organization, I think is the point here.
In terms of clarification, when you're talking about the sheriffs, and you say 550 will be affected, are you talking about each individual personnel?
Not each and every of the 550. There's a number inside the 133 that will be affected.
And is there any possible way that you can withdraw? In other words, I'm asking if you can provide or find out the information, what percentage of what funding will that half a million dollars come from, since it's going to also appear in the next amendment for all of us to approve?
Well, it's in your general fund. It's an amount that will be there to absorb the increase that is to be negotiated. We don't know that number yet, so we're planning for it. We saw some projections, and based upon some projections we saw, again, they were just total assumptions because these negotiations are not anywhere close to being done. When we were shown some schedules by the sheriff, I think it was last month, there was some assumptions that changed year over year the increase in the contract by a million dollars. So based upon some of what we've seen, we just assumed half, but we know there's going to be an increase. So it would be, we felt it would be inappropriate to ignore that, so that's why we've put a $500,000.
I appreciate that. Who's in the negotiations team, and are we including community engagement in that budget that we're discussing today?
The negotiations, I think you're speaking to negotiations involving the sheriff. That's involving the sheriff and the union. We're not involved in that.
And the reason I ask is because if we sign a contract, there has to be a medium where we are understanding what the contract is despite what's happening over there. Do you understand what I'm saying? Because I feel like we don't have the appropriate information, and if we're voting on something, there should be a level of data that I can at least, or we can at least, look at.
And I appreciate that. The current language in the contract does obligate us to respect, in fact, it's almost that clear, that whatever contract we sign with them, to the extent there are negotiated changes in their labor price, that we agree to absorb those costs. And that's standard language, not just us, but all contract cities. So we have to accept whatever it is they negotiate.
Thank you, and that's what I needed to know. That wasn't clear. Now it is.
Oh, I'm sorry. The second part of that question was with respect to community involvement. I think that's relating to us here, and that's effectively the point of this meeting, is to have a public workshop, inviting the public, asking for their feedback during the public So this kind of summarizes a little bit of where some of those changes are felt. We did talk about pay class 57 and below would be the labor group here at the city that would be enjoying the 10%, and I'm proposing to freeze and not apply the 10% rate increase to any leadership, in large part really to show absolute support to our staff, but also it's my belief that leadership is already working 40-hour work week, and that's kind of the reason why I drew the line there.
And does that mean we're going to have Fridays open up for the community to come in on a Friday?
So as to the schedule, that's something I haven't decided yet. Really, what I've attempted to do with this budget is identify first if we can afford it. And so now that we've gone through the exercise, I'm here with this budget document in front of you, saying that we can afford it. So not having completed the exercise, it was probably too preliminary for me to figure out what the work schedule was until knowing if we can fiscally afford it, believing that this is a possibility, and presuming I can get council concurrence to make the shift from 36 to 40 hours, then I would evaluate the schedules. I certainly would appreciate feedback from you. I think our options are, I think there's three options. I think there's one option, which is to go back to a five-day, eight-hour-a-day work week. I think 980 is your second option, and I think 410s is also an option worth considering. I've been talking with the employees, and when appropriate, I can share with you my opinions as to what I think the employees would like, but that's something that I would like a little bit more time to evaluate. But I certainly would welcome your feedback. There's pros and cons to all three of those options.
Right. And I would appreciate something maybe data-driven, whether it's a survey, so I can actually look at the results as well if you're going to survey the employees. I think we have about 430 employees. Will this affect our employees who are on-call and part-time, meaning will they also get that 10% increase to benefit?
Everybody that's below 57 would enjoy the increase.
Thank you.
Not applicable to part-time, sorry.
So it's not applicable to part-timers or on-call?
On-call are FTEs that are likely in the range of 57 and below. You'll see the position eliminations, the 10, and where those were. And so with that, that's really the high-level overview that I've prepared for you. I'll come in towards the end and back clean up the next parts of the presentation. Sophie Smith, deputy city manager, can lead in the development and economic growth, and then George Harris, other deputy city manager, will speak to the greater details of the budget. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Smith.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. We just have a couple of slides that talk about some of the, city manager has already talked about some of the assumptions, so we want to talk about some of the more prominent numbers in the budget that the council may be concerned about as it relates to economic development. be concerned about as it relates to economic development, so for sales tax projections in the upcoming budget year, we basically budgeted pretty flat, it's a pretty conservative approach to budgeting, as you can see the numbers on the slide, there were slide increases in the city Q4 of this, of 2018, over Q4 of 2017, but staff still feels comfortable just with some unknowns in what's happening in the retail market that we're watching, where we'd rather be conservative and just kind of budget flat, so that's the assumption that we took with sales tax, but you can see the actual numbers there for the latest quarter of sales tax numbers that we have. Just on this slide, what you'll see is, you can see what our leading sectors remain, general consumer goods, our auto sales and transportation-related costs, of course, restaurants and hotels, fuel and service stations, the opportunities that you see are what we'll call retail voids that have been identified by the experts who look at sales tax, there are some areas where there are still indicators that we have growth for new opportunities in those areas, so these are the type of businesses that, as, for example, the economic development team targets. As far as current and upcoming activity that we'll see that will end up impacting next year's, next fiscal year's budget and next fiscal year's revenues in terms of a sales tax, et cetera, we have looking to open in June, the city's first Gardenas Market at the old Ralph's Grocery Store, a Circle K just opened this past March, and another's opening on Esqualia and La Mesa, we have a couple of speedwashes in the works, I think three to be exact, but the one on Bear Valley will be coming in 2019, and as you see the bottom note there about the Old Town specific plan, we're hoping that with the new land uses that are made available, the mixed uses, et cetera, and with all the efforts down there, that we'll be able to start seeing some positive activity there. Just very quickly, without going all over, over each of the bullet points, as you can see, the on-airport activity at SCLA overall has been very good, in the second half of this current fiscal year, and projected into next fiscal year, we are finally at pretty close to 100% occupancy of all available buildings, and we are looking for other options to generate revenue. And finally, on the off-airport side, which, you know, besides the job growth and all that comes with those jobs that are, that are brought here, people living, working, and spending here, and all of those ancillary effects come from all of the off-airport activity, the Newell brand expansion that was just completed in March, taking that building to a million square feet, the Volkswagens are continuing to take up a lot of acreage out there next to Dr. Pepper, and city manager has mentioned this in his, in his reports at the end of the council meetings, but Dr. Pepper is actually building its sixth, its sixth filling line to bring, it's actually bringing new technology, and they're expanding in their operations.
Sophie, if I may interrupt you, looking at the opportunity section, were you able to protect any of the opportunities for any of the potential jobs that could be incorporated with SCLA in the opportunity section, or did you just divide it and say, these are the possible opportunities, and then go ahead and discuss SCLA, and what percentage is your development team focusing on job creation for a current area in terms of partnerships and consortiums of that nature?
So the opportunity slide was primarily focused on the sales tax section, so it was primarily focused on retail opportunities, opportunities to increase sales tax revenue, the slides on SCLA were speaking to general economic development activity, job creation, revenues of other sorts to the airport, and then, of course, the activities at the airport have all the ancillary effects, whether it be hotel rooms being sold, which involves increased DOT, or sales tax, refuse, fuel sales, those kinds of things, so it's all economic activity, I'm sorry, what was the last part of your question?
Partnerships or consortiums, in terms of how we, the city, are partnering with other entities to create jobs for individuals that are incoming and those who are not employed or coming into our cities.
Yeah, so all of the business attraction that we do, which is whether it's in the retail section, the industrial section, or any other sector, is, one of the primary focuses for that, besides the direct revenue it will bring, is the job creation, as all of you know, a large percentage of our population commutes to outside of the area, and so one of the large focuses on any business attraction is to get jobs that bring living wages and sustainability here to our city, so that's 100% of our focus all the time.
Thank you.
The last slide just basically shows that most of our projections as it relates to development and fees, et cetera, especially in the single-family residential sector, they're pretty flat, as you'll see, last year, we issued 322 homes for single-family, if you look at the first quarter year-over-year projections, we're not even hitting last year's projections, we are paying attention to the building industry, listening to what they're saying, and no one seems to be predicting catastrophe or any kind of crash, but anything other than slow and steady growth is not something we're willing to project right now, so you will see pretty flat projections for the 29 calendar year, and actually for the rest of the, for the entire fiscal year, 1920.
I didn't, excuse me, the projections, what are the actual to date, fiscal year ending 2019?
The first quarter so far, 85 is the actual number, so.
That's, that's, is that the first quarter of the 18, 19 fiscal year, the first quarter of the calendar year?
It's the first, it's the first quarter of the calendar year, so we use that to project out the remainder of the calendar year, and not wanting to project any increase into 2020, we use the same projection for fiscal year 18, 19 as our basis for 1920, to be ultra-conservative. Okay, and finally, just as far as economic activity and affordable housing, the council has been made aware of the former Queens Motel project now called Desert Haven, and we just wanted to provide the update that we received, as you know, we are not the lead in this project, we are, we have simply entitled it, and we are working on some possible partnership on it, but for now, it is actually a project of the housing authority of County of San Bernardino, and they are projecting a pretty quick rehab once they get started, probably late summer of 2019.
Sophie, I have a question, I just read that the governor has passed a law, or has a law, that is going to require cities to do affordable housing, and it was stated that cities are being given a second chance to come up with affordable housing that will meet the needs of those who are now without, however, it also states that if a city does not bring about the building of affordable housing, the state will step in and tell the city the requirement, now, how do we stand in regards to affordable housing in Victorville, are we with the proper pace, or are we totally behind, as in many cases, in the crises?
The issue is, an issue that's popped up, Scott Webb, I'm going to ask Scott Webb to come on up, because he's probably the most up-to-date on it, I think what you're alluding to, Mayor Potem, is the effort the governor's office has initiated, and in fact, he's gone so far as to actually litigate against cities for not meeting what I understand to be RENA numbers, and so I think the question more so is related, how do we stand, and should we be worried about something like that, and I think Scott's prepared to answer that.
Yeah, so my understanding as well is that the state has been putting pressure on cities that do not have adopted housing elements, and within the city's general plan, there is a housing element that's supposed to account for future growth in the city, the city has to allocate areas within the city for a different share of affordable housing, so within the city of Victorville, we do have an adopted housing element that's good for another two years, so we're complete, we're in complete compliance with the state, so that allows for development of low-income to even the higher-income ranges that RENA addresses, but as far as like forcing the city to build affordable housing, it's still something that the city's not in the business of building homes, we do zone for it and allow for that type of development, and that's where the cities have been getting in trouble, is because they haven't been allocating areas to reach their RENA numbers.
But there is a plan in place to fulfill the requirements that the governor is placing on all those cities, correct?
Yes, for Victorville.
Have the intent.
Yes, we have the plan that's adopted, and we're in compliance with HCD.
Thank you very much.
I'm a little bit confused with what you've just stated, it seems like we're in compliance, but yet we're not doing our part because the city is not in the business of creating these affordable housing, so those two sentences for me are very conflictual, because we are in compliance, but we're not doing what we're supposed to do, but we're in compliance, can you please clarify that?
I think every, every city that's in compliance is grappling with the issue of affordable housing, it is what it is, the city does have, you know, our CDBG funds that we use to help where we can, but it is, it is a state issue, the state's coming out with more funding sources to help achieve that, but it is, it is kind of two separate issues, yeah, there's an overall issue of housing affordability, and then there's the issue of cities that have ignored complying with their housing element requirements, and that's, those are the cities that are getting pressured from the state to comply.
So we get 1.2 allocated federal funding for CDBG completely used, right, we allocate the 1.2 million, we don't keep or phase out any of these items, and we're doing it not just for housing, I'm assuming we're doing it for different categorical, categorical needs, not necessarily for the housing, is that where we can fall short and probably start allocating more of our monies towards that allocation and stop focusing on the other gamuts, do you see what I'm saying, to try to propel a solution perhaps, I'm just wondering if that's a possibility?
Councilmember Gomez, if I can add to what Scott is mentioning there, so the calculations for our RENA numbers and our affordable units that we have, it's not just dependent on those properties or those units that are built by the city necessarily through any of our funding, it can be units built in our city through private developers, affordable developers, and the majority of the units that we have here in our city were actually built by private affordable housing developers, some of them partnered with the redevelopment agency when we had them, so when Scott mentions that we're in compliance, for many years, the city did participate in the building of affordable units, but so has the private market, and so those numbers together are taken, and that's why we are in compliance right now as far as our RENA numbers.
Okay, so I appreciate that, so does that mean that the city will now look more forward to partnering and being not only in compliance, but allocating such funds, so that we don't have this conflict of, yes, we have enough money, and we, we're getting the money, but we're going to be stepped upon, whatever the governor person, now it's pressure on us, in other words, are we, do we have a plan for that to take place?
So what, what you're speaking of is exactly the issue that every city is facing when we have a mandate to build more affordable housing as a city, but we don't have any funding provided by the state for that, especially since our largest affordable housing fund was taken away, so it is the dilemma that we're facing.
If I might, excuse me, I don't want to get into a long discussion on unfunded mandates, but that's being challenged on that very basis, that the state is requiring local government to do a particular thing and not funding it, which most cases in the past have been held to be illegal, if they're going to mandate it, they must provide funding in some way, the hope is that affordable housing and all segments of housing will be provided by private individuals in the private sector, funded by private money, and that the city itself does not take money that it does not have, or have no source of income to build housing, regardless of what the state mandates, if the state is going to step in, that's not to say that they may not try, they may try to reallocate funds that they're currently providing the city to redirect it toward housing, there's nothing in place to do that at the current time, but it's a kind of a veiled threat from the federal government, if the states don't fund the things the federal government wants, they will redirect their funding, which everyone involved in this kind of funding fields will fail when challenged in the courts, and the same thing occurs, there may be cities that are the fairly rich cities with very extreme houses that aren't providing low-income housing, but as we have indicated before, in comparison with those statewide problems on low-income housing, we virtually have a complete city full of low-income housing, while we don't foresee that the state will be mandating anything for cities like Victorville, since there's an abundance of low-income housing, but back to the central question, no one can expect us to cancel programs, there is no restricted fund for the housing, we do have, we do have the annual funds that we get from county and state in regard to the community development funds, but that's not to build housing, and it would be insufficient because if you allocated 100% of those funds to low-cost housing, you'd have four and a half houses, so, so it's a, it's worth discussing because we keep watching what the state is doing, and while the state, well, the governor has indicated that they're going to pursue, and possibly with whole funds from those cities that don't comply, the question of compliance has nothing to do with Victorville, they're talking about the cities that the city council have not provided in their general plans and their housing elements to provide low-income housing, and the state is trying to bring pressure on those things to change those plans, make, make room for that, even if they have to join in a cooperative agreement with the private sector and sell bonds for housing, we are not in that position and not likely to be without a major change in the law in the next four or five years or longer, so, you know, I can see where staff hasn't thought out four or five years on what we're going to do, but right now.
Yeah, and right now, the state.
That I know of, to address it.
The state mandate is for cities to take the RENA numbers that the state provides and provide zoning in your city to allow for that future growth, it doesn't dictate that the city has to actually achieve those RENA numbers, but we have to plan for it, we have to have space in our city to allow for that type of use to occur.
So madam mayor, may I, so what councilmember Cox said leads to a question that I have with regard to affordable housing, within the last several months, we've been, Victorville has been cited in one report in particular to have the fifth most affordable housing in the state, so is there any thinking that that might bias some clout with the state, certainly there are much greater offenders if Victorville could ever be considered an offender than, than we are?
Yeah, I don't believe that we're on the state's radar list at all.
That's what I thought, thank you.
And then one last thing, I didn't realize that it wasn't the city of Victorville, as councilmember Cox has stated, but other cities, so if it's not the city of Victorville, as I presumed, because this is one of the cities and we're under state law, then I'm wondering, what are we doing so that it's not about the state, but it's about our community residents, are we going, is it, this is just the two-year plan, right, after that two year, we have to implement and continue some, some type of plan, I don't know if it's right now to pre-allocate funds for that to occur, because we do have this workshop right now where we're discussing these issues, and if it's something along the two years, is it appropriate for us to discuss something of that nature now versus waiting for the two years, because it's not five years, it's two years according to what I've heard?
Yeah, so in, in two years, the Southern California Association of Governments will issue new RENA numbers for every city, and then the city will, within that same year, adopt a new housing element, so at that point, we will address the new RENA numbers and make sure that we're in compliance again.
Okay, so we'll move on to the.
So, we'll move on to the budget overview. And this is where, where, where we will draw a connection between the PowerPoint and the books that you have in front of you. So, on the next slide, you see how the revenue, when we look at the total city perspective, you'll see how the revenues are broken down. 28% come from taxes and we'll get in a little bit more detail. Actually, that detail's listed in your book under, starting on page number two. And then the, the largest category in the city is charges for services. So, that would be all of your user fees for utilities, which includes water, wastewater, sanitation, we call it, solid waste, and then the VMS utility package. On the right side, you'll see the expenditures by category. So, this is not to be confusing, but in most, most of the time when you look at a city's operational cost, personnel is generally the largest component. But in this particular situation, we have, we contract out with sheriff. And so, that sheriff contract to the tune that we just discussed, the 26 million about, is actually located in the category entitled operations and maintenance. And so, that's why you, you'll see that that operations and maintenance allocation is larger than the personnel allocation. So, in your book, that starts on page, the summary is, is listed in more detail, starting on page number two and then continues on through to page number five.
Excuse me, but will you explain to me how we're going to cover the expenditures when the revenues are less? We have an expenditure of $2.1 million projected that we're in the, in the red.
So, in, in a lot of, the special funds, we, we will utilize fund balance. And, and most cases that those are project, project-related where we have actually been storing money in fund balance and then expending it in the year where we've accumulated enough money to complete that project.
Okay.
And so, that slight surplus or shortage is, is related to that. So, there's not new revenue supporting those projects, it's actually revenue we've collected in prior years that have accumulated.
And may, maybe saying it differently and going back to one of those earlier slides when I was talking about the 81 funds. Each of those 81 funds will have a positive or negative cash balance. And, and largely, they have cash balance. And so, in the case where an expenditure for a particular year exceeds the revenues, then you would, in that particular fund, go into the actual cash balance and pull cash out. It's like basically pulling money out of your savings account. So, you're using savings effectively to, to manage.
Is that by definition, the transfers in as it's stated? No?
No, that's something different.
Just, just note at this level of the explanation, this is all of the phone, all, all of the funds collectively. And so, when you look at that negative 1.9, it's an accumulation of all the funds that have negative spending that make up that 1.9 and it's very little. The next description we'll get into is in the general fund. And the general fund is the most active fund when it comes to the majority of the services provided by the city. And we are operating at a close to a 1, 1.8 million dollar surplus in that particular fund. And so, when you, when you drill down into the general fund, it's, it's actually pretty healthy. When you look at some of the individual special funds or special revenue funds, you'll see that there are very short, small instances where we're actually utilizing fund balance. In some cases by design. We have a phased approach on our sewer rates, for example. And so, when you look in the sewer fund, you actually state, well, when we set the rates, we anticipated that we had fund balance available to contribute to a phased rate approach, in which case we utilized fund balance to balance the year. So, that's one example and we can get into that detail here. That's one example where we, we anticipated and actually planned to utilize fund balance to pay the bills, knowing that we didn't want to hit the ratepayers with a large rate increase all at one time to offset. So, we can get to that detail here shortly, but, but just know that we're looking at from a perspective of all the funds together and still showing up with the 1.9 million shortage.
If you, if we have 81 funds that we're looking at, how are you defunding the term fund balance, not general fund? It must be.
So, each one of those respective funds will carry its own balance sheet and identify its own fund balance or lack thereof, depending on the fund.
Wouldn't it be worrisome if we're using our savings? Because I think we're supposed to be at 15% and I think we've only, we've only got at five or was it opposite?
Actually, that's a really, really good question and a good conversation and I'm getting there.
All right.
So, we'll talk about the reserves for the general fund here shortly. So, the next slide is the city expenditures by fund type. And this is where you can see, as we're talking about jointly all those funds together, 29% of, of those total, of that 216 million represents the general fund. 52% represent the enterprise funds. And then you'll see the other fund types making up the, the balance. To put, to kind of help organize your perusal through the book, you'll see that those fiduciary funds have their own tab there in the book where they're identified. The special revenue funds have their own tab, so you can see those funds in greater detail. The general fund makes up the bulk of the, of the book represented, starting on page six and then moving through to, through, to all the various departments that are listed within the department, or the general fund. And so, all the detail is there for you. So, to begin the discussion on the general fund, the general fund perspectively is looking at 63,750,000 in revenues. And as Keith mentioned earlier during the slide that discussed the assumptions that were being made, we do have and we are recognizing an additional $1 million payment from the VMS loan to come over in cash this year. And so, in essence, that $1 million will be reflected on the balance sheet by year end as an additional $1 million. And it is our plan at this time to have that $1 million be added to the general fund reserves to begin, well, to continue building on the general fund reserves. And then you'll see listed is the total expenditures. To see that total expenditure line in greater detail, you'll, that also too starts on page number six and then carries on to seven of your workbook. And then it is then broken up by the departments in that section, starting with page eight and on. I'm sorry, starting with page seven and on. So, what we're looking at today and when I, when I mentioned the general fund being healthy, I don't think there's ever been a time where I've gone into it, but this is probably my 16th budget being presented to a council. And I don't think I've gone into a budget process, assuming that we're going to be spending more money than we bring in in the general fund. So, the goal is always to spend no more than what you collect in revenue or expect to collect in revenue when you write your budget and this year is no different. We are blessed this year with that additional million-dollar transfer, but in essence, the goal was to balance the budget too without that million dollars, assuming that that million dollars was going to go into reserves. That determination was made when that loan was originally drawn. Keith and I, City Manager and I sat down and we discussed where we were at with the reserves and knowing that that money was going to be transferred over $1 million at a time over the next six years. The goal was made and the determination was made at that time to direct that money to building general fund reserves. And so, that, there's, there's no surprise that that became one of our assumptions as we developed this budget moving forward. And, and we will continue to budget that way moving forward.
So, I, I don't see the healthy part of the general fund when there's a deficit of 1.8 million.
No, that's actually a surplus. It's a surplus.
So, they're bracketed because it's a surplus, it's not a deficit?
That is correct.
So, what does the payment loan have to do with, is that where we get the surplus?
You have, yes, so that $1 million payment is part of the surplus in addition to $869,000 that, that has yet to be determined where it's going to be spent. So, looking in the general fund, the majority of the revenue that is collected in the general fund do come from taxes. So, 70% of the revenue, 70% of that 60, 63,750 comes by way of taxes. This next slide identifies kind of our core, actually the, the core revenues that come into the general fund. These top six revenues represent 90% of the revenues coming into the general fund. Property tax is, is projected to be relatively flat. That is just what we've experienced the last couple of years and, and I don't want to err, I want to err on the side of caution as far as projecting property tax. In terms of sales tax, we actually have hired a consultant.
I have a question, I'm sorry. There's a, you project an actual reduction in property tax receipts?
Yes, because we had some makeup payments included in the, in the revenue that we got last year. And so, those were considered relatively one-time. But last year, there were some makeup payments that were, that carried over into, that made up last year's total when we revised the budget. And so, it'd be impractical to assume that those makeup payments would continue.
What exactly are the makeup payments?
So, the, the big one is the, is the redevelopment agency. So, last year, some additional revenue was leaked from the debt being paid off and then being released after we, we were caught up in, with the outstanding debt and with the airport. And so, we got some catch-up payments.
Well, then first glance, it would appear as if the value of property in Victorville was decreasing.
Right. But when you look at absolute revenue, there's.
Correctly related to redevelopment, the fact that redevelopment no longer exists by state law. You can collect the tax to pay the debt, but once the debt's paid, then that amount is no longer collected.
It's no longer collected for the redevelopment agency.
For the redevelopment agency.
But.
It is collected by the other taxing entities.
And we are 16 cents of those other taxing entities. So, as less money is being received by the redevelopment agency, 16 cents on the dollar will accrue to the general fund. And so, we had a catch-up payment this last year. And so, yeah, when you, when you look at these numbers, there's very, there's a lot of different categories associated with property tax. So, you'll have regular property tax, you'll have past due property tax, people paying their taxes late. Those will accrue to us in the year that they're collected by the county. And so, they are, all, all those different components are made up into that one number. Sales tax, on the other hand, we do get pretty precise numbers from our, our consultant, HDL. And HDL has projected that, that exact number, that's the number we use. And so, they are, they are projected that sales tax is going to be relatively flat going into the next fiscal year. On the brighter side, it's like slightly lower revenue than the others, but we are projecting some growth in TOT. We have one new hotel that has popped up and greater activity on some of the others. That some of the other hotels that were delinquent for some time is starting to, they're starting to play catch-up. And so, we're starting to see real numbers being reflected in the, in the history there for TOT. And then below that, you have the franchise fees, cost allocation and other pass-throughs.
George.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any hotels, motels that are delinquent in paying their taxes at this time?
We do have a few and so, I can, I think Kim has that information, but a lot of them are, most of them are paying catch-up and, and they're on payment plans. And so, the majority of the larger ones that were delinquent historically, they're actually on, they're paying their current, plus they're paying their, their payment plan for the prior years. Sophie and I had a conversation about this on the way to lunch one day about a year ago. How could we make sure that these people pay their taxes? And so, a year ago, the development department started placing conditions in their, in their business license that they are caught up on all their delinquent TOT taxes before they would be issued a new renewal on their business license. And so, as a result, we're starting to see a lot of the businesses comply.
Wonderful, thank you.
How many hotels are situated in the city of Victorville?
22, Sophie.
And I don't know what pass-through is. You said franchise fees, cost allocations and pass-throughs.
And so, those are pass-throughs coming from the variety of the former, what do we call redevelopment agency types? So, that's SCLA pass-through, pass-through to the city as well as the redevelopment agency.
Thank you.
The next slide shows the breakout of the actual general fund expenditures by department. Historically, you would have saw fire and police broken, or jointly together listed as public safety, as they were both contracts. Now, I think it's incumbent on us to just to break out those, those costs and show where fire is and separately where police is. Since we've been, we frequently discuss them independent of one another in conversation. So, I think it's great that we start talking about them separately. And I think this is an opportunity for us to share kind of the status of fire. And when we actually had a chance to put the budget together this year and compare it to what our original plan was, we are, the budget this year is, is pretty much mirrors the plan that we originally adopted in January of 18. But if you go to the public safety tab in your book, you'll see the actuals for fiscal year 16, 17 for the fire department. That represents what was paid to the county fire contract. 16, 17, the contract amount was 13,144. Then increase to 13,373. And then you have an anomaly last year because we had nine months of contract, which was valued at about 11.1 just for those nine months in the contract for the county. And then you have the balance of the, of that $18 million number representing our startup cost plus our staffing for those first, first six, I'm sorry, first three months. And then you'll see now annualized for our first year running, a budget of 12.4 million when compared to what we were paying under the county. I'd like to add that we, under the county, we did not have enough budget. We didn't, we didn't buy new vehicles. We didn't do any major facility improvements. And so, I want to let you know that in this particular budget, it includes $750,000 of capital spending for vehicles. We have on order two type one engines that'll be delivered. So, there's lease, the lease payments for those vehicles are included in this budget as well as once those two new engines are received, we're going to be refurbishing two of the existing engines to the tune of 550,000 for the two. So, to put it in perspective, the, the prior budget of $13 million in the county never included, were never able to include capital expenditures and rolling stock purchases. Whereas in this particular budget at 12.4 million, which is lower than even their contract, we're able to not only afford the staffing at the, at a slightly higher level than what we had under county, but we also have enough budget to afford the rolling stock purchases and replacements and some, and some other physical needs that were required.
George, I'm curious. The general fund expenditures by department, something caught my eye when I was looking at this and it says, I'm going to go specifically to animal control. In animal control, it was 945,000 and it goes to a million in 1920 and it was a 20% change. Can you tell me why?
Rita, what page are you on?
You see, you know.
George, what page is Rita on?
She would be on page.
Page 26?
26?
Uh-huh, in, in the booklet?
Have we come to that section yet or are we?
Yeah, it's actually 25, page 25 on 26.
And that, this is development department summary.
Yes.
I was just curious, how come, why is the animal control changed by 20%? It went from 945,000 to 1,135,000? I mean, is there expenditure by personnel, more, more people or what happened?
Well, a portion of that is, is affected by the, the furlough, removing of the furlough. So, 10% of the wages are being increased because as a result of going from a 36-hour week to a 40-hour week. So, that's a good chunk of it. And then I want to say, in that year, we captured some of the savings because we did have a vacancy in that, in that department in the current fiscal year. And that, and since that position's been filled. And so, we are budgeting a full person to be in that position for the entirety of the year for next year.
Just thought maybe we had too many animals here.
We do have a lot of animals, but it has nothing to do with that budget.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. So, that, if there's no other questions on the department-specific for the general fund.
Well, I don't know if it's a question, but it's probably more a comment for the record, for public safety department. You pointed out that for 18, 19 revised budget, it's 18 and 11.1 was for the first nine months. And so, the remaining, which is the three months, which include the capital expenditures.
And staffing.
Car, and the rolling, I'm sorry?
That's capital expenses and staffing.
Okay, and the rolling start costs, which was 7 million. So, if I look at the 1920 budget, even though it shows here projected at 12.4, if I accumulate the three months of what it took us to start, which is another 7 million, it really costs us $19 million. It's not a question, it's just clarification for the record.
Okay, I'm not clear on your statement, but.
For clarification, it's, you indicated the equipment. And I think, to be fair, county fire had addressed the issue and brought to attention that the equipment was running. county fire had addressed the issue and brought to the attention that the equipment was running out. It hadn't been replaced. It was becoming, where it would have to be replaced, is capital. They anticipated that, had that contract continued in this budget year, and I believe there was more than a million for equipment only, we didn't continue with that. But they at least brought to the attention that it hadn't been replaced in the past contracts, or the contract would have been more. They anticipated it had to be done, and we had to accept that, which we did, except rather than buying it through the county, it's on our own fire department. We knew that was going to occur, and the minimum was going to be one million plus.
That's correct.
And it, and and of course, once the staff finishes their assessment of all the equipment, and apparently you've gone a long way, I'd like to hear a report back to the council on how much more capital is needed, what can be salvaged, what can be replaced, what is new, and what can be repaired. I think it'll be an interesting number.
Okay, and we can get back, actually, we um been talking with the city manager, doing just that, doing a kind of a a catch-up on what we've experienced now that the fire department has taken over, and the chief could um provide a lot more detail in that regard. But I think to further your statement, that is over a period of two years, if you want to add the twelve million to the seven, for a total of nineteen. If you were to compare that to thirteen million per year, under the county situation, um, that's, we're, that's still lower on a per-year basis.
So, you did mention also that this was adopted January twenty eighteen, so.
I'm sorry.
That's why I'm making sure that we, it's not two years, it's perhaps a year and some chunk, but I appreciate that clarity. Now, uh Cox, Mr. Cox had just stated something, which he wants reporting. I'm assuming that we're going to get a list for something more added to fire, whatever we need in terms of that. Uh, I I believe, if I recall correctly, this council already ado- adopted a blanket check, which means, instead of having to come back and ask us for mo- for more, this blanket check, you're able to not come consistently on a certain basis of a number, and you can continue to supply. Is that not applicable here? I remember questioning the word blanket check, and that's why it was, I thought it was a technical term.
Yes, and so, let me make sure I clarify that.
Thank you.
Um, we don't write, council will never issue a blank check to to the city. So, what we had at the time, we had two particular vendors that were being used to port, purchase the majority of the equipment.
A sole source.
Wasn't a sole source. We actually piggybacked on a, uh, on another bidding process that was done at a, at a higher level than than us, and we were able to do that. Um, what we, uh, we identified a multitude of items that we needed to purchase. We identified the approximate cost, and we had the council approve a blanket purchase order for that particular vendor who who provides multiple items at that particular um, uh, that the, at that particular time, we identified that needed to be purchased. So, rather than coming back to the council with every transaction, now we're buying gloves. Now, we're buying boots. Now, we're buying this. We identified with those items that needed to be purchased. We identified the approximate cost. We identified that that was within the budget, that was allotted when the budget was created and approved. And we had the council approve a blanket purchase order for that vendor to provide that specific list of items.
Thank you for that. Well, yeah, I'm going out to the community, and I'm hearing this blanket check. I'm like, uh, if that's what I understood too, I'm going to clarify it. So, it was a blanket purchase order one time for that time that we adopted it. It's not consistent and continual, or contingent upon anything else. It'll come back if there's another one of those.
Right, going into next year, if any of those items are are required for replacement, repair, you will see, and if it exceeds that that authority that that goes to the council for approval, which is currently set at fifty thousand, you will see a staff report asking for that purchase order to be approved.
Okay, and then one last thing, I don't know, um, since you're the CFO and the treasurer, um, forty-two percent of our budget, and I'm just going to assume it's just for the general fund. Um, I've encountered and seen other cities like the city of San Bernardino, once it hits the fifty mark percent of our budget, there's a lot of trouble of bankruptcy. And in order to anticipate nothing like that in the near ten, twenty years, what are you and what is staff doing to make sure that um we're not just doing the military policing? Because we're not a a community of crime, we're a community that we want to engage our police officers with a smile. Not everybody's a criminal. Um, and so, those, that's a concern that that the community has voiced to me. And it's forty-two percent right now of the general fund.
And so, you're speaking of, just to add some clarity, you're at, you're speaking of the percentage of the general fund that funds the police department?
Yes, is there a plan?
Is there a plan?
Right, are we going to be reaching fifty percent, and then sixty percent, and seventy percent of our budget? In other words, I'm just anticipating, what are we creating solutions so that we don't consistently militarize our police force? And with that militarization, we're increasing the budget at a certain rank. So, we're open gamut looking at all facets. It's not just, it's not just, uh, community members don't just commit crimes. There's sometimes errors, whatever we want to predefine, community engagement I'm trying to bring back.
Okay, so, and and I think I I see where you're going, and and I and I appreciate the question. However, I think we're getting into a much bigger conversation about the service that the police department provides. Currently, they are sitting at forty-two percent of our general fund budget. On an annual basis, they're going to provide us with a quote as to what their costs are going to be. We're going to evaluate that, place it into the budget, and then and and organize the budget accordingly. If it, if it were to ever come to a point, I think that if the the costs are are becoming too absorbent and starting to squeeze other areas, then that would be a conversation I'm sure the city manager and the council would like to have with the police chief and see, are there ways that we could accommodate those types of increases, so it doesn't push us into into negative spending?
And and I don't think uh this is a premature conversation. Um, I think it's something, because it's a work, uh, budget workshop, it's something that we can continue to build on our budget.
That's fair.
Ma'am.
Okay.
Madam mayor and members of the council, if I might, and 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 just so that we, the the public isn't totally misled in in the conversation, especially when we use the term bankruptcy, um, and and try to identify measures as to whether or not you're a a risk or not. Um, there's not an exact measure um as to, as to whether or not a percentage of your general fund budget going to public safety means that you're you're a threat of being bankrupt. In fact, I I would tell you quite the contrary in this particular budget, specifically since we've had, uh, dealt with those rumors unrelated to general fund before, especially with bonds. All of our bond issues are cured and behind us. All of our fiscal matters, as they relate to non-general fund bonds, um, have have been cured and and resolved. Um, and and I would point specifically to um what you probably will see, or maybe it's on the slide behind me, it is. Um, I think the biggest point, the, and not to steal too much of Georgia's thunder, but I think the point to address whether or not we're at risk is the fact that we have sequentially over the last several years contributed to our general fund balance, actually padding our reserves, growing our reserves. So, I think that's fiscally responsible. Uh, certainly not something you do if you're in in the world or being threatened uh by bankruptcy. I will tell you, however, um, and and this really becomes a policy decision. It's not something that I view as something to worry about today. But when you look at public safety being combined between police and fire of sixty-two percent, that's the forty-two plus the twenty, sixty-two percent of your general fund is paying for public safety. And as that number continues to rise, uh, and your demands as a council for general services increase, whether they're animal c- control, code enforcement, or additional recreational amenities, that's when you need to worry. More so related to, can you meet and fulfill the demands of the community? Has nothing to do with bankruptcy. Um, but but the issue that this council will have to grapple with in years to come is, as those public safety costs increase and your demands for more parks, more recreation programs, more uh code enforcement, as those increase as well, something's got to give. Okay, and so, that's a totally different risk. So, I I just wanted to dispel any concept of bankruptcy, because that's absolutely um, not something to consider in a budget like this, because you're actually, you're actually increasing your cash reserves.
Right, I just want to add, the active management of this budget's process is what's key. And so, as we go on year to year, and we know that these numbers are changing, we we can make those, make those necessary cha- adjustments. As I sta- started this conversation with, you never want to go into a fiscal year knowing that you're going to be burn, spending more money than what you brought in in that particular year for your general fund. So, that's always going to be a general fund assumption. What you gained as a council by moving forward with bringing back in in-house your fire department was ability to maneuver their budget to make it fit. That's not something we necessarily had under the last situation, is that we were provided with a price. We were told, this is your price. And we, unless we were willing to reduce staffing costs or staffing levels, we really didn't have an ability to effectuate any kind of change to make that fire budget fit into your revenue scenario. Now, you do have that ability to do that, as you do with the rest of the departments in the city. And as it comes, when, as, to follow up on what Keith was saying, you as a council, we have the ability to maneuver your budget and make tough decisions when necessary to avoid the word bankruptcy. We have, we're building reserves that could, that could help get, buy us time to make those tough decisions. But in essence, you have the ability to make, and the flexibility to make those tough decisions, to avoid those scenarios. With that in mind, the next slide, you do have the status and the five-year history. Yes, ma'am?
I have one question, George. Um, go to page thirty-six in the booklet and explain to me why, under the golf fund four hundred, um, eighteen and nineteen, they're all zeros, nineteen, twenty, zeros. Uh, there's no, there's no money listed for the golf.
Thirty-five, okay, sorry.
Page thirty-six, can you tell me why they're all zeros?
So, starting with the budget last year, the golf fund was dissolved. Based on a recommendation of our auditors, where they noticed that year after year, the golf fund was requiring a subsidy from the general fund, the intent of keeping it in its own fund was to basically show it as an, as a, uh, for lack of a better phrase, an enterprise in the city that was actually generating enough surplus revenue to build its own fund reserve and treat it like its own business. But after the auditors, after a few years, noticed that that was not the case, and that the general fund was actually subsidizing it, um, their recommendation to us was to not have it sit in its own fund, but to in in actually sit in the general fund as an additional general fund expense, which is what it's become.
That's what we voted for.
Like any other, the park, park amenity, correct. And so, what you see going forward, I'm sorry?
It was after the audit, yeah.
The audit, the auditor did make that recommendation uh two audits ago. Um, and one of the reasons why the city was not able to do it in the years prior, when the, when the recommendation first came about, is because the general, uh, the golf fund had created a a loan, and actually debt. And prior to the VMS, recognizing the VMS loan back to the general fund, the general fund didn't have the ability to absorb the debt that would come with the general fund. Or, I'm sorry, with the golf fund. So, last year, along, so the VMS payment comes over, it brings money enough to support the transition with fire, and also five point five million dollars into the general fund to be able to absorb the debt that came with absorbing the golf fund. And so, it had been a note that the uh auditors had been making for a few years. Last year was the first year that we were actually able to make it happen. And so, what you see in the golf fund is zeros, because those expenditures are now tracked in the general fund and not in the golf fund. But because it has two years of history in sixteen seventeen and seventeen eighteen, that's why it still made the book.
Thank you. Okay, so I need clarification. So, in the past, I'm going to assume that we had over di- different funds that were funding the golf course. One of them being the golf fund, which you just talked about. So, we have moved it from the golf fund to an enterprise fund.
No, the golf fund is an enterprise fund.
Okay, so this one is the enterprise fund, okay. So, then we moved it from the general fund, which was subsidizing the golf course, which was discretionary to the council.
The other way around, so the actual, the activities of the, for the golf course were now being tracked in the general fund and and expensed, and and revenue also received in the general fund because of such, uh, because of the subsidy that the general fund was providing. It was a recommendation that you no longer treat.
It as an enterprise.
The golf cour- course as an independent enterprise that it should be treated, because of the size of the subsidy, it should be treated just like any other park amenity inside of the general fund.
Oh, yeah, that was going to be my question, because if we're subsidizing with discretionary funds, that this council has authority to do so with a majority vote, then we've changed it from an enterprise golf fund to being funded with the general fund. Is that what you just said?
Nothing has changed, so whether.
Well, it has changed, because remember the journal entry of six point six million dollars with with error that I kind of said, this is what we're allocating? So, I just want to make sure, where is the money being pulled from now, since it's no longer being pulled from the golf and enterprise fund, from the general fund?
Currently, all of the revenues that that accrued to the golf fund prior now accrued to the general fund. So, those revenues are received by the general fund, and the expenditures are expensed inside the general fund for the golf course. Where prior, those those transactions, the the financial transactions representing the golf activity was managed in its own fund, and it was then getting a subsidy from the general fund. So, it was a cash infusion from the general fund into the golf fund. Now, as a result of that, enterprise not supporting itself.
Right.
Is now brought into, in all the same transactions. Nothing's changed as far as how, how much money it's being received by the golf fund. But it's all now just being tracked inside the general fund, along with all the other subsidized park amenities.
Okay, so it's still considered a park system, and now it's coming from the general fund. It doesn't come from any other fund?
It's always been.
And maybe to help illustrate a little bit better, I just handed something out, and what what I've handed out to you is actually extracted from the community services department budget. But to help illustrate where the funding source comes from for all parks, including the golf course, all parks being Avalon, Brentwood, Center Street, Eagle Ranch, Evadale, Grady Trammell. All of those are subsidized by the general fund. So, to help illustrate that, um, I've I've handed something out for you that that shows you that um, and shows you on a park-by-park basis, what each park generates in terms of revenue to the extent they can. Uh, of course, what the expense is, and the the net difference is the subsidy.
Thank you. This is what I had been asking for. This is perfect.
Okay, so, and in the past, it has not just been one fund, it's been multiple. I've seen up to four, so that has stopped totally as well.
I'm I'm not sure on your question.
Yeah, subsidies for the golf course have not only been one fund, they have been multiple funds. Because now I'm going to assume, based on your discussion and clarification, that one hundred percent of the subsidies that come from the golf court, that are for maintenance and operations of the golf course come from only general fund, one hundred percent of all maintenance and all operations.
But also, the revenues that the golf course generates that used to be coded to the golf fund are also being received by the general fund as well?
So, that was yes to my question, then I'm assuming.
All the revenues are being coded in the general fund with the expenditures for the golf.
So, let me ask it again. One hundred percent of operation and maintenance are coming from general fund only?
The expenditures are being coded in the general fund a hundred percent.
So, the answer is no, right? There's, it's multiple layered.
No, there's multiple revenues coming in to support the golf fund, which include the revenues generated by the golf fund as well, which are currently coded into the general fund.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we covered the reserve, um, in essence, at the end of this year, the idea is that we're going to contribute one million dollars to the reserves to bring the balance up to an estimated uh eight point six four million. That number is still preliminary. That number may be higher. We're going to, as far as what this budget is intended to contribute, that number stays the same. We're going to plan on sending a million dollars. But until we finalize the audit for the current year, um, the actual fund balance is going to be based on the results of the current fiscal year that we won't finalize until the audit process. Um, but we, this is based on how the budget is laid out now, and I only expect that number to be higher.
Okay. May I go ahead? Okay, so madam, may I like to chime in with a few questions as it relates to reserve? And perhaps a few of the things, I'm afraid if I don't chime in now, we're going to run out of time, and I won't get my questions answered. So, um, with regard to this particular slide from um June thirty, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, there's showing about, um, does that include the one million dollar um VMS? I'm presuming it's the VMS loan repayment?
Yeah, so the difference that you see between projected fund balance at end June thirty nineteen of seven point six four and the projected at year-end June uh thirty, two thousand twenty is the one million dollar VMS loan payment.
And that's assumed that that's going to go toward our general fund reserves?
Yes, by nature of the way the payment, it's going to move from a receivable to cash, and it's going to, it's going to land in fund balance.
And so, I'm I'm really glad that you've made that assumption, because that puts us in compliance with the, with the policy that we have. Um, in in preparing for this meeting, I I contacted the city manager, because I'm, especially when we're talking about budgets, I'm, you know, always concerned about fiscal, um. because I'm, especially when we're talking about budgets, I'm, you know, always concerned about fiscal, um, sustainability and, um, stability. And so I asked our city manager, um, what percentage of our budget is to be allocated for general fund reserves? And, um, I was told it was fifteen percent. And then I asked whether we had a formal policy, um.
Let me, I, I'd like to add a point of clarification, I don't mean to interrupt you. The allocation of the annual contribution to reserves is not fifteen percent?
No, no, I didn't mean that.
Okay, okay.
It, it's, it's to be held at fifteen percent, not fifteen percent, right. And so I asked if we had a formal policy that controlled, um, how those reserves might be spent down and how they might be replenished, um, are they, how they'd be spent on emergencies, on revenue shortfalls, hard times, um, economic uncertainties, et cetera. So I did get a copy of that policy and I was really glad to see it because it did spell out, it answered all of my questions, especially as to the advantages, um, of having that, that reserve, that general reserve fund, general fund reserve, I always say it backwards. And it also talks about the replenishment of the fund reserves and that if it's below the target fifteen percent, then there has to be a plan to rebuild it. So I'm glad that you've got, you've put in that, you've targeted that one million dollars toward replenishing our reserve. So with that one million dollars, where does that put us in terms of that fifteen percent mark at, if we, um, look at June thirty twenty twenty?
So if we, um, adopt the reserve recommendation here that includes the million going in, that would actually get you to a ninety percent level of your reserve target. Uh, so the reserve policy advises anywhere between five and fifteen percent. If fifteen percent being your highest target, um, you're ninety percent of that or thirteen point five six percent.
Okay, very good. So we're at ninety percent of it, all right?
And, and if I can, uh, the one thing that I think is really nice to capture in this slide beyond the numbers because the, the reserve, um, uh, the, the, the general fund changes every year, so the reserve dollar amount will change, it doesn't really stay constant. But I think the point, if, if we were to just show our progression over the time, you can certainly see the upward trend, but if you looked at the bar for June thirty two thousand sixteen, in that particular year, that calculates out to being fifty-nine percent of your fifteen percent reserve target. It grows to sixty-one percent in two thousand seventeen, it grows to sixty-seven percent in two thousand eighteen, seventy-five percent, presuming we finish the way we expect, uh, this year, growing to ninety percent. So I mean, you've seen over those years now, um, quite a steady increase in your reserve, uh, balance.
And is the expectation that each year, um, the monies that are repaid, um, from VMS, that a percentage, if not all of that, will go toward reserves? Is, is, is that money generally targeted for reserves?
Right now, the plan that, that staff recommends is the, the million to go to reserves.
So we could look at six, six some odd million dollars to go into reserves over the course of the next so many years?
Next five years, correct.
Okay. All right, and then, um, so I, I'm so thankful for this presentation because it's already answered a lot of my questions and I, I didn't wanna ask any questions that weren't related to the actual slide, but I do wanna make sure, Madam Mayor, that at some point I have an opportunity to ask some questions as it relates to the budget binders, because I have some specific questions on that. But for now, I wanna stick to the slides.
Except that I think we only have until four o'clock.
Okay, so then, um, so then I'm gonna go ahead and since people have been chiming in along, I have a few other questions, if I may. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, um, on page three of our, excuse me, page three of our, um, budget binder, where it's the operating budget for all of our funds, the projections reflect that operating margins are in the negative by about one point eight one seven million. So this tells me that there's an expectation of deficit spending. So can you explain how we can have monies for discretionary spending, yet the numbers reveal at least to the layperson otherwise? And I understand there's a distinction between the general fund and the other funds. But if the layperson were to look at that, it looks like we're gonna be spending money that it, that it looks like over the course of those eighty-one funds, looking at the city as a whole, we don't have. Can you, can you explain that?
Yeah, um, I think, uh, the bulk of that difference could be explained in the sanitation fund, fund four two five, page thirty-six in your book. And when you do aggregate all the funds together, this is, sometimes it's often easily explained through, through just one of the fund, thirty-six, thirty-six? And so, looking at the sanitation fund, um, we're looking at a difference of one point nine million. This particular fund itself represents a deficit of two point, about two point seven? About two point seven million. So this, and, and that is by design. When the rates were developed in the sanitation fund, sanitary fund, it was estimated that in year one and year two, that we would be utilizing fund balance, some built-up fund, fund balance that accumulated, accumulated over the years to create a phased-in rate approach.
Right.
And so when you then aggregate all the funds and you come up with a negative one point nine, you start looking at, okay, so what are the special funds that generally represent the largest deficit spending? The sanitary fund is one of those. So this is, that particular deficit is, in essence, by design because we didn't.
What page, I can't, I'm trying to follow.
Thirty-six, so under the tab enterprise funds, you have the tabs there, that's probably easier.
Thirty-seven.
And then the second page in the section entitled enterprise funds, it's the sanitary fund, fund four, four two five. And you're looking at revenues for the sanitary fund at fourteen point nine million, expenditures at seventeen point six. So when you aggregate, that's about two and a half million dollars just by itself. And so, and I, and so I know that when you look at the, at the aggregate, overall, you think one point nine million dollars, that's, that's a lot of money, it's deficit spending. But most of that attribute, is attributed to the decisions made in the sanitary fund to actually utilize fund balance to cover a phased-in rate increase approach over, that was broken up over a period of five years.
And, and is it expected that, um, that over the course of time, that will equalize?
Correct, so as those rates are increased over that phased-in strategy?
Depending on rate increases to do that.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, and then just a general question, um, with regard to the twenty nineteen twenty twenty budget assumptions. Have we considered all of our statutory and other obligations into that? I'm presuming we have.
Yes, of course.
Okay, um, and then have we included in it, and I presume we have, the Old Town Specific Plan?
The actual, I think the funding for the Old Town, uh, Specific Plan, uh, was, was in the current year?
So it just carries forward?
It carries forward.
Okay. And... Okay, and then, um, does the twenty nineteen twenty twenty budget anticipate any extra needed help that might, um, be required for administering the homeless solutions task force?
Yes, the actual body, um, the homelessness solutions coordinator was actually budgeted in the current year and that, the budget for that is carried forward into this current, into the proposed year.
Okay, good, and then I, I was very happy to hear that our, that the, the concept of eliminating furloughs was already built into projections. So, um, Mr. Metzler, you alluded to this earlier, um, in, in terms of how the employees might feel about this. Can you give us a, a little more information on your general feel for that and what your thinking is on it?
I can tell you, based upon conversations that I have had with the employees, there's a strong sentiment that, uh, we continue to work, uh, the four-day work week schedule and go to a four-ten's, that seems to be the popular consensus. And what I have to evaluate is that combined with, um, what's gonna give us the best customer service and the best customer response. Before we went on furlough, we actually were on a nine-eighty. Again, there's pros and cons to each of the options. I think certainly one of the cons when we went to a nine-eighty, um, was that there was confusion as to which Friday we are working and which Friday we weren't working. That created a lot of confusion and that became a customer service negative. So, um, I can tell you the least favorite would be going back to, to, to five days, uh, certainly. So I, I would, I would rank them in that order. And I'm really trying to, to weigh what are the, the, what's, what's the best in terms of pro and con. Looking at a, uh, four-day, four-ten schedule, um, the interesting aspect of it is it actually creates a workday that's extended in such where it may be easier for members of the public to come in before their workday starts or, uh, when their workday ends and us still being open, uh, because we'd be open over a longer period of time, perhaps when they're commuting back home or when they're commuting out to their, to their workplace. So, uh, that's kinda, kinda where we're at, but I would, I would, I would rank them in that, in that order.
Is it fair to say then that when you're evaluating, um, the pros and cons of the various options, that customer service would be your highest priority?
Customer service is my highest priority.
All right, and if we were to eliminate furloughs, um, we would naturally get a boost in code enforcement. Could we expect to see, um, some of the demand that's currently placed on law enforcement reduced and then assumed by code enforcement?
I, I certainly believe so, certainly for those that are more, um, lesser type crimes for the police department, but more appropriate type municipal code issues for us, uh, yeah, I think we could be more responsive to those, potentially freeing up PD to, to deal with more serious things.
And then on page fourteen in the budget binder, if we could turn to page fourteen in the budget binder. And this is general fund expenditures by line item. And these are all in alphabetical order, so if we go to the line item legal and we look at, um, a reduction of only three percent for eighteen nineteen, uh, for nineteen twenty over eighteen nineteen, that's surprising to me because we've had several major suits settle. So I'm wondering if the city manager could unpack this a bit as to why our numbers are still so high? If not, you know, either in the general sense here or maybe bring something back to us if the council is so inclined that unpacks these numbers a, a bit for us as to why our legal expenses are, um, seem to be at least a little bit on the high side for our current situation?
We can do that.
Thank you. Um, one moment. That's all I have at present, thank you, Madam Mayor.
And so we do have a capital improvement plan presentation for you.
Uh, yes, and before I jump into that, and we're nearing the end, so I think we'll, we'll be able to make the four o'clock, um, there's just a few more slides to talk about some, uh, just to highlight some CIP projects. But I didn't wanna lose sight of a couple of things specifically that the council asked us to do. We're probably not gonna have a lot of time to go into it in detail, but for example, one item that council asked us to bring back during budget conversations involved the mortgage assistance program. That's something that Deputy City Manager Smith has put together. We actually put something in your inbox today, um, that I believe is largely responsive to what the council had asked for. Certainly, if the council so desires, uh, if there's another workshop, we can certainly elevate that to a specific discussion item, presuming, of course, there's further question comment, uh, regarding that matter. But at least, uh, to at least be responsive to the request, we've addressed it that way. So that's awaiting your review. One other thing that the council asked us.
Sorry, what request?
That was a request a couple of meetings ago, um, where the subject of discussion at a council meeting was the mortgage assistance program. And, uh, the city council had asked that it be provided with greater details of how the program works and that perhaps during budget conversations would be the best time to bring that back up. So we've brought that back up in the form of written memorandum to you and, and perhaps to the extent you believe it's necessary to, um, have another workshop to, to cover that, we certainly can. We just, we're trying to, um, make sure we're hitting at least the high points today in today's presentation. The other thing, um, and, and perhaps also illustrated in the handout we just gave you regarding the park subsidy, in a previous meeting, the council did have conversations and interest in YMCA, that was a subject matter. I think the question to this coun, uh, I'm sorry, the question from council to staff more so was related to, don't, do we as a city already provide, uh, services similar to the YMCA? And certainly we've done research, we actually, uh, did research to find that we actually contemplated YMCA twice, uh, once in, um, two thousand six and then another time dating back to nineteen ninety is, is, is how far back we went. And what we did learn was largely YMCA is varied depending upon, uh, area that they're located in. But when we looked at the common thread of programs that they offer in other communities, we compared them to the programs that we offer, uh, through our parks and rec and we found we match or exceed, um, the, the services they offer depending upon location. So we certainly believe we have, uh, the types of services already available. That's not to say we shouldn't, um, have, uh, another program such as a YMCA, but I will tell you directly that with the subsidy information I just shared, uh, we are subsidizing very similarly natured programs, um, that the YMCA, uh, does. And if there's further discussion the council wants on that matter, we can certainly bring that back. Uh, the capital improvement program, um, it's, it's, as you saw on the earlier slide, it's, it's a fairly, um, large part of the budget. Uh, here are some of the highlight items, uh, in the budget. And, and I think it's important because when, when, it seems like the council's focused a, a few times now on the deficit spend. And when you look at an item, for example, like sewer or water, each of those enterprises are governed by a rate plan. Where, where very typically the rate plan is studying a period of five years and what the cash needs are to survive, the system needs over a five-year. And it's not uncommon to, to, to increase the, the collection of cash in earlier years to pay for big spendy items in, in future years. So some of these CIP items that you see, such as seventy-seven, um, a hundred feet of, uh, main line replacement or trunk line replacement or even small diameter pipeline replacement, those are all, um, identified and supported by a rate plan and, and therefore cash exists to be able to handle some of these big spend items. Other CIP items noted here, um, some small ones, um, actually, the fire department is probably the biggest, uh, where we're identifying two type-one engine ref, refurbs. There's some communication improvements, uh, we need to make, uh, that have been identified in the plan and, uh, just some miscellaneous station equipment. And I think a lot of that station equipment will be kind of covered in a report that's actually already drafted by the chief. I think we're expecting first meeting in June to have a report back that serves as the transition report as to how it all went down on March twenty-ninth, I think it was, including condition assessments and what we encountered and what were the surprise spends, um, when, when we walked in that we had to attend to right away. I think we would have intended for it to be on the agenda next meeting, but we found some more stuff. So, uh, taking a little bit more time to, to finish that reporting. And then finally, um, and this is where, um, we've offered some items as examples. Uh, but we talked about the one point eight million dollar surplus, uh, on the general fund. Staff is recommending using the million to, to help bolster your, uh, general fund reserve. Therefore, in, in, it effectively leaves about eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for the council to consider for, uh, priorities. It may have, uh, certainly have, having heard some at the last meeting, we just programmed a general ballpark number, uh, for technology improvements for the PD, uh, that we'll continue to work on with them. We've identified some facility needs, uh, that they really, um, are, are, are needing at, um, the facility on Amargosa Road. But then equally important are some of our community and park and rec facility, uh, type improvements. So we put some suggestions up here, uh, that, uh, just so happened to eat up that entire eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, but this effectively, I think, is the opportunity for council to, um, share with us their concurrence disagreement or, or give us any direction as to, uh, perhaps different things it might wanna see.
So, Madam Mayor, at this time, do you want people to chime in? Are we gonna do this portion at another meeting, 'cause we have ten minutes?
We completed the entire presentation, or are we still?
Um, I can, I can close it out just for the sake of, of fostering your, your conversation or facilitating your conversation. So, uh, we, we identified some threats. I think, uh, we took, took an approach, very, very conservative approach to this budget, um, looking at, at all the strengths, all the threats. And we conservatively, uh, projected revenues. Deferred maintenance on infrastructure is still a continued, uh, concern. And there is one issue that's emerging that we, uh, will likely address later in the year. We have identified some funding needs in the storm drain fund. We can talk about that in greater detail as, as time progresses, but that is one fund that we have identified that needs, uh, some fiscal attention. that we have identified that needs some fiscal attention. With that, I'll just go ahead and close it out and open it up for questions or comments you might have.
So, Madam Mayor, what's your pleasure? How do you want to proceed?
Well, are there any questions? We have about ten minutes.
I've, I've asked my questions, but with regard to this last slide before the threats, there we go. Did you want us to start discussing this, or how would you like to move forward? Because this could potentially be a lengthy discussion. I mean, I certainly am, would be in favor of the traffic technology improvements for a half a million. I think that's well spent to help our community feel safer and be safer.
My suggestion is that if anyone has any additional questions, they can ask them at this time.
Okay.
So I'm kind of concerned because we have a request here, and I don't think it's an approval request, it's probably a suggestion to add into the budget. We have traffic technology improvements of half a million dollars. What does that look like? It's not itemized, so I have no clue what technology in terms of traffic would mean. I don't know if you're alluding to traffic cameras, what it entails. So to me, this is not explanatory, there's no explanation as what it means. And then it says, police department restroom remodel. I would actually like a trip to view the bathroom, and what is it that we're going to be spending fifty thousand dollars on? How many bathrooms? What are the conditions? I'd like to be able to have a tour of that. And then for the police landscaping, another twenty-five thousand dollars. I would like to look at the details of what it is. Are we putting rock? What are we looking at? This is so generic that I think it's unfair to just place something as a suggestion and then assume that it's already a done deal, saying this is what I agree with, when we don't know, we don't have the details, there's no data to back it up, no one has made any comment, it's just a generic technology. And what does that mean? What does that look like? Do we just accept it as, okay, we're spending just about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or whatever amount, five hundred, half a million dollars? I, I'm not feeling comfortable with just a generic, yay, okay, let's do this. Now that I've stated that, there's a couple of things out in the community that we didn't discuss that could have been potentially something a part of this. For the parks, we have a wide population of disabled children and adults, autistic, whether it's low or high functioning. None of our twenty-three parks are tailored to the population of a vast majority that we have in the city of Victorville. It's not been added here as a potential suggestion. Community has reached out and said that that would be something. As a matter of fact, they use cemeteries to have their children go and play because of the nature of other children not being able to understand the disabilities of these children, which kind of breaks my heart to know that parents take their children to a cemetery, because we don't have one park in the city of Victorville that could potentially accommodate children that have disabilities, whether they're high or low functioning. The other thing is, and I've talked to this, this council about it, is community engagement in terms of police force. A lot of the times, I don't know what the training is, but our police force potentially goes out into the community and shaking of hands and doing things like that on behalf of the city is, is very imminent for our, our populations that fear the authority behind this thing that we wear. The other thing is pool, over thirty-five years, we have one pool in the city of Victorville, and I know at one point Christian Gunter, who was here, had said that that pool is cracked. This pool is also something that's widely used at limited times when it's summer, and we are not looking at that. And I know community services is one of the pockets where we least provide our funding and our monies, but this is the majority of what our children and our teenagers are using in order to stay out of potential crime. The other thing, permits, oh, whether it's, if this could be or cannot be budgeted into this, I've gone to several small businesses, these businesses would love to be able to either relocate or, or understand the general gist of, of why they're being targeted in terms of their business. They'll come in here and they'll come four to five times before they have someone actually help them. So I don't know if that's just community, customer service, or how, if there's any funding that is allocated with our staff.
Point of order, excuse me. I don't mean to interrupt you, but we're taking up all the time, and I believe others would like to speak also.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you. So on the traffic, they, they are in fact all suggestions for the, the council and the half a million dollars. I, I don't, just law enforcement being the way it is, I think that there's some things that are necessarily confidential strategically, so I don't know if that plays a role in it, but I'm presuming it does. All of these things look like very sensible kinds of things, I can understand wanting to have a little bit more detail certainly on watery model would look like, or what it would entail. With regard to children and adults with disabilities, certainly there are many disabilities beyond those on the autism spectrum, but I, I don't know that making a park sensory friendly for those with sensory integration deficits is, is ever going to be possible, but I know that there are things for, for individuals with other types of disabilities that are, that are popping up around the nation. That means some swings that are, that are accommodating for people in wheelchairs and things like that, but I think that might already be being considered. And then I think about things in terms of city and community relations. Are we building in money for community forums and kind of the pop-up events that we've been kind of talking about here and there for our community? Monies for concerts in the park and things to just generally enhance community spirit, those are also important. But all of these things here actually fall into those kind of categories too. We have to have proper lighting. You know, these are real, these are real tangibles that are probably very important. And then of course, I always think about our homelessness, if we can, you know, allocate money upfront to fulfilling what might become priorities of the task force, improving walkable areas and beautification areas in our city, that's, that's always a, a cry out from our community. So there's so much to consider, I just wanted to chime in a little bit. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Jim, did you have something?
I did, just one item real quick. The homeless issue is being addressed by many, many different agencies, and in the brief overview of the discussions, I hear that the federal government and the state government has allocated funding for mental health issues, and yet I don't see anyone addressing the mental health issues for the local homeless. I would ask staff to report to council, is there money allocated to Victorville, or is it through the county? How's it being allocated? I know it's being discussed. Supposedly the other large cities have access to that, is focusing on that. We are not, because we don't have any money, and if we did, we have no place to put them. This is a state issue in regard to the mental health, but there's funding from state and, and federal, and we don't have any allocation. I don't know why, and we need to address it, I think. Not now, but it's, it's a question that's-
We can put together a summary.
If anyone talks to, if anyone talks to the homeless population or talks to the police department, you will find that there is more and more people there with huge mental problems, and, and I just don't see it being addressed. So, that's all. I have a lot of questions, but not today.
Yeah.
I would like to say something. I, I know, as Deborah has mentioned, all of these things that are requested are for the city. I find fault in that there is nothing mentioned for the families or the residents of the city of Victorville. There are three things that I think are very important, and that is, number one, children and the family. I would like to see on this list somewhere, movies in the park for the summer, for the children, to enjoy something. Secondly, I visited our city library and then made a comparative study with Apple Valley and Hesperia. I do believe that our city, the only city library that you have, should be looked at and especially remodeled, because people are really in cramped spaces. They're using the facilities and they're doing a great job, but my God, you couldn't get one more body in that library if you tried. And I think that we're doing this favor to the public for that. And the third is, I believe in having a good time, and I think that families should be provided a place of entertainment. I would like to see a water park for the summer, for the families, for the young children. So I, I can understand all these needs. There's no question about it, I don't doubt it.
Rita? I'm sorry, our time is up.
Thank you. But I do believe the family does come first. Thank you.
That's all the time that we have. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.